Barb, can you put the phones?
Yes. Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Gary?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Mr. Wickliff?
Here.
All right, will you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. McMullin, would you like to say a few words here before we begin?
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, our recognition, staff presentations, and community public comments, feel as important to review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. For those community members in attendance who have signed up for public comments, please come to the podium when the Board President calls your name. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, yelling, foul language, props, visuals, and addressing the audience are not permitted. In addition, per Board of Education policy, public comment forum may not be used for political promotion or gain. Failure to adhere to these guidelines will result in the loss of future opportunities to participate in public comments. After public comments have concluded, the remainder of the meeting is designated for the Board to work with the Superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Patrons who stay for the remainder of the meeting after public comments do so in a observatory role. Those who disrupt the meeting will be asked to leave and will lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Again, thank you for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin. Maggie, would you like to start words and recognitions?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon is...
Absolutely. Good evening. I'd like to take a moment to welcome all of our distinguished guests. Tonight, we'll be honoring some of our fall high school state athletic champions, as well as our outgoing Board of Education members. We're going to start with our athletic honors, and so I'd like to ask Matt Johnson, District Athletic and Activities Director, to come forward to help with these recognitions as well. Our first up, we have the Olathe North Gymnastics Team. Uh-oh. There we go. If you could all come forward, along with Coach Amanda Harrington and Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Josh Price. The Olathe North Gymnastics Team won the state championship title this fall. Senior Ella Margheim... Ella, where are you? Way... there she is. Took first place in all four events and snagged the All-Around Award. As a team, they scored 110.475. They broke their school all-around score record and multiple Acacia State meet records. Congratulations to all of you. Congratulations, and I know your families are here as well, so if any of your families want to come up and take a picture, you're welcome to do so. Put you on the spot.
Come on, Mom.
Oh, yeah. Here they come.
That's awesome.
There's always one.
I'm always that mom, too.
All right, are y'all smiling? Yeah. Congratulations. Josh, you can actually see at the front. I'd like to ask Olathe North sophomore Anjali Hocker's thing to come forward. Welcome. In addition to being named the 6A State Individual Girls Cross-Country Champion, Anjali was undefeated this season and won the Sunflower League and the Regional Cross-Country Championships as well. Congratulations to you, Anjali. Congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize the Olathe West Girls Cross-Country Team. We'd love you all to come forward, along with Coaches Kelsey Garbajo and Todd Clam, Principal Jean Novacek, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Pat Butler. The West Girls Cross-Country Team took the Team First Place Honor at the 6A State Championship, and this is actually the second year in a row that they've won the championship title. The Owls scored a 52 with six runners in the top 30. Absolutely amazing. Congratulations to you guys. Any West parents who want to come up?
Another big group, okay.
Congratulations. It has been quite the year for cross-country. I would like to have the Olathe South Boys Cross-Country Team come forward, along with Coaches Zach Pope, Mike Pope, and Caitlin Canuth, Principal Dale Longenecker, and Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Ben Sutherland. I think there's a traffic jam. The Olathe South Boys Cross-Country Team snagged the state championship 6A title this year with a score of 70. This is the first-ever state championship for their program in the history of Olathe South, and overall, the team's spread from their first to fifth runner in the top 30 was 39.6 seconds. Amazing. Congratulations. We may need two rows. Yeah.
I love that idea.
Congratulations. We want South parents to have a chance to take pictures, too. Back to your spots. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a final special recognition tonight. We'd like to recognize our outgoing Board of Education members. This is their final board meeting, as we'll be swearing in our new members in January. So if Brian Geary, Brett McKeon, and Kristen Schultz could come forward, along with President Joe Beveridge... You get to come, too, Joe. It is my honor to recognize and thank these three servant leaders who have served the district and the Board of Education well during their time in their current positions. They have shown incredible leadership and dedication. Brian Geary has served on the Board from 2018 to 2021. He's been a longtime supporter and former Olathe Public Schools Foundation Board Member, where he volunteered to help honor staff through the Educator Excellence and Classified Staff Awards programs. He also serves on the Kansas State High School Activities Association Board. So thank you to Brian. Brett McKeon has served from 2013 to 2021, and during his time in the Board, he also served on the Foundation Board of Directors, the Olathe Chamber Board of Directors, and on the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund. He has also helped hire two superintendents during his tenure. So congratulations. Kristen Schultz has served from 2020 to 2021, and she was also on the Olathe Public Schools Foundation Board of Directors and was instrumental in the launch of the Foundation's Women's Giving Circle. And she was also, I understand, on the 2013 Bond Task Force. So congratulations to you, Kristen, and thank you. All three of these individuals have had children that are either alumni of the Olathe Public Schools or who are currently attending schools in the district, and during their time on the Board, they have supported the vision of the Olathe Public Schools to prepare students for their future. So on behalf of our almost 30,000 students and more than 5,000 staff members, we want to thank you for all you have done to support the Olathe Public Schools. And that concludes our recognitions tonight. I don't know if you have... do you have family in... Oh, Micah.
Oh.
Oh, Micah, I'm sorry. Gary, family, will you stand up? Thank you, Brian.
All right, I was going to give Mr. Geary an opportunity to say a few words here, and Kristen might as well, if they'd like.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Joe. I just want to thank a lot of people. So this... I won't go too long, but I want to make sure that I get a lot of people thanked here. I first want to thank the amazing senior leadership team that we've put together here over the years. There's a lot of faith that lies in a lot of your hands in this community, and so I feel incredibly blessed that as we end this run here, we've got great people in place, and that's something I have a lot of faith in. And so I want to say thank you to all of you and your leadership through these equally as tough times, including the building leaders that we have, teachers and staff. Oh, boy. Daily in the trenches, and this includes coaches, sponsors, any staff member. These last couple of years have been... you've been an outlet for so many kids and such leaders in our community in so many ways, so I want to say thank you for that and just played a key role in so many people's lives. Dr. Jaeger, thank you. Mr. Allison, if he was here, I'd say thanks. He and I came in at the same, almost the exact same time, and I outlasted him, and so I don't know if that's good or bad, but I did. So thank you, and I'm thankful for you guys' leadership and making a... John, Allison, and Joe and I probably spent two or three hours a day on the phone for nearly every day for a long period of time, so I don't... not that I miss that, but Mr. Allison, if you're watching, I don't miss that. This board of directors here, wow, we've made some... Some tough decisions, and we've done a good job. So thank you, guys, and it's not always been easy, but we've done it. Okay, moving on. I want to thank my family who stood up earlier. Heather and Micah. Boy, we've celebrated a lot, and we cried a lot, not me, just in front of everybody, but it's been... thankful for your support during this time. Your family takes a lot of the heat and a lot of the same circles, so thank you. Love you, guys. Sorry. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to Olathe, allowing me to serve this great community. We've had our ups and downs, and I'll always be Olathe proud, so thank you, and it's a great place to live and it always will be, so keep working hard for this community. We'll be there, so thank you. And also, I'm sure my mom and dad are watching at home. They watch every board meeting from Omaha. Mom and dad, thank you, I love you, and thank you again, so sorry for the...
Well, I didn't prepare any remarks, and I don't want to follow that with very much, but I spent a lot of time in the shadows of school board issues and school district issues and public education, and I never, truly never, expected to be sitting on the dais with these people. But thanks to Amy, who is probably watching, who vacated her seat early, I had the opportunity to apply to join this board, and I'm so grateful that I did and when I did, because they are an amazing group of colleagues, and I feel so privileged to have worked with each one of them and to have had the opportunity to work with Dr. Jaeger, who I first met in this very room and thought he was a parent, and asked if he'd like to sign up for our grassroots public education group. And he did. The staff, the leadership team here is absolutely extraordinary. We are so fortunate, and I wish you all well moving forward, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to join you.
I thought Dr. Jaeger was a student. It's been 20 years ago, too. It's been a great run. When I moved to Olathe, or when we moved to Olathe, our girls were in third grade and first grade at Heritage Elementary. We chose Olathe simply because of the education and we knew what to expect from our schools or from the school district. I've always been impressed with the leadership that the district has had, not only from the Board, the leadership team, but mainly the leadership from this community. This community's been an outstanding advocate for education, always has been. I think this region, and you look at the other school districts, are great advocates for education, and I know that they'll continue to always be. As I shared in the meeting just prior to this, there's hundreds of thousands of kids in public education, and there's thousands of school boards, and there are seven that are up here, and I would say they are pretty remarkable. We have worked very well together, but I don't think you'll find a more diverse board in the region or in the state of Missouri, even the state of Kansas, than what we are here. We get along really well. We understand the leadership team, but we also understand what our strategic plan is telling us each and every day, what we need to do to improve education for kids, and I don't have a question that that will continue, because I think the strength of this board... We have opportunities and we have challenges, and it's a good. It's time to grow, it's time to continue to look forward, and this district is going to be in good hands, and I can see that for sure. I'd also like to thank the leadership team, Dr. Jaeger and your team. You've been really fantastic. Yes, I get... had the opportunity to get two new superintendents. That was amazing exercise for all of us. One thing I didn't ever want to do, but Dr. Brady decided he ought to leave and go on to greener pastures, continue to work, but we got along really well, hired the right person. We had a transition year, as you all know, but it worked out really well. I think this board did grow. We grew together, but we then lost some board members and some new ones came on. Then Mr. Allison left for Texas. We wish him well, but we are grateful that we have Dr. Jaeger now leading this district. We made the right choice. It was an easy choice, and he doesn't look like a senior now. You know, I want to continue to be involved in our community. Many of you know that I'm a real advocate for kids, and I've been a part of Boys and Girls Club for the last 10, 11, 12 years. I want to continue to spend more time with Boys and Girls Club here in Olathe, continue to grow that unit, and be an advocate for those that are less privileged in our area. And you know that we have a facility right in downtown Olathe by Center of Grace, and that's where I want to continue to spend some of the free time that I will have still with children. So thank you all very much for the service, allowing to serve you. It's been an awesome ride, and let's proceed.
So I just want to say a couple things, too. So I looked up the definition of servant leadership. Servant leadership is a leadership philosophy in which the goal of the leader is to serve. A servant leader shares power, puts the needs of the employees first, and helps people develop and perform as highly as possible. Instead of people working to serve the leader, the leader exists to serve the people. And I personally can't think of three better examples of that in the Olathe community than you three. And Maggie listed some of the things you did, but she only scratched the surface. There's a giant iceberg of stuff that you guys did that you didn't care to get the attention. You didn't want the attention, you didn't want the credit, you just wanted to do what's right and help the community. It's been an absolute pleasure to serve with all three of you, and it's been an honor to call you friends, so thank you so much. Thank you, Joe. Deep breath, and on to information presentations. Bond Communication Plan 3.01.
Very good. Maggie is still there. She was thinking ahead tonight and said, "I think I'll do recognitions from the podium, if that's okay, and that way I can just stay there." So we are excited over the next number of months to bring to you bond updates, both in terms of the different strands that will be shared with our community that have already been shared with our community, but just details as we get closer to that bond election date. So Maggie is going to kick us off with kind of our first presentation in terms of what will be a series of presentations over the next few board meetings related to our upcoming bond referendum. So thank you, Maggie.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to be here, and I'm thrilled to be able to share a little bit about the communication plan that we're putting together around the Bond 2022 campaign. So just for a quick reminder for those in the audience, at the November board meeting, the Board of Education approved a $298.3 million bond issue election that will come in the form of a mail-in election in March, and this bond election would address the district's needs around growth and reinvestment, technology and innovation, student experience, and safety. So in communications, we are working on building a comprehensive communication plan to make sure that we are keeping our stakeholders, our staff, our parents, and our community informed and updated about everything that is a part of this bond election. And I wanted to share just a little bit about our role in the district is to educate and share information, make sure people understand how to register to vote and then when to vote, but we aren't able to tell people how to vote. I can't tell you to vote for or against, but I can give you all the information you need to be able to make a decision on this bond election in March. So first and foremost, we are building a comprehensive website that we are very excited about and hope to launch later this month. This website will have information about all the different strands of the bond. It will have information about voting and how to register to vote and when to vote, and the thing that I'm really excited about is our Frequently Asked Questions section. This section will be constantly updated and evolving. As we get questions from our community, we'll be able to update this part of our website and make sure that people get all of the information that they need. So look for that later this month. The other thing on our website, we are going to have a place where people can submit questions as well. That will feed into our Frequently Asked Questions, and we'll also be able to answer questions of those directly from people who want more information. This is going to be a shameless plug, so prepare yourselves, but if you're ever wanting information about the great things happening in the Olathe Public Schools or the great things happening with a bond election, we encourage you to follow us on our social media channels. So we are on Facebook, we're on Twitter, we're on Instagram, and our handles are up here. Over the next few months, we'll be sharing quite a bit from our social media channels to make sure that we keep our community informed. So I always like to describe our philosophy of communication as we like to cast a wide net, meaning we know that not everyone gets information about the district from the same places. Not everyone is on social media, not everyone goes to our website, but we want to know that we are reaching all of our stakeholders, so we cast a wide net of information and reach across all of our different channels to make sure that we get all of our stakeholders informed. So coming up, there'll be lots of different channels of information. Coming up, we have the Olathe Insider, which is our parent newsletter. which is our parent newsletter. It comes out monthly. We also have In the Know, which is a staff newsletter. And then we will be sharing information with our principals to put into our school newsletters, because we know that there are some parents that that is their main source of information. In January, we'll have a brochure available at all of our schools in English and Spanish. And we're also working on an informative video that we'll share across a variety of channels. Face-to-face interaction is really important in sharing news about this bond and all the projects within it. So, we have district leadership who are going to be going out to Olathe community groups across the city and making presentations, sharing information about the bond election. District staff will be going out to staff meetings at our schools to make sure that our staff members know what's a part of this bond. And then something that we're really excited about is we have two bond information nights scheduled in January. And this is an opportunity for anyone in the community who's interested in hearing a presentation about the bond, asking questions, to be able to come. January 18th at Chisholm Trail at 7:00, and then January 20th at Santa Fe Trail at 7:00. So, more information will be coming. Particularly if you're following on the social media channels, you'll see it there. So, how do you vote? So, if you live within the district boundaries and you are already registered to vote, you will automatically receive a ballot in the mail around February 9. If you are not yet registered to vote and live within the district boundaries and you are interested in participating, you have until February 8th to register, participate. And then the big important thing is, once you get your ballot in the mail, you have, it has to be received by March 1st at noon at the election office to be counted in the ballot. So, we will be encouraging folks to mail in their ballot a few days ahead of March 1st, or you can drop it off at the Johnson County Election Office. The other thing is the Johnson County Election Website has lots of great information about registering to vote. If you're interested, participate. I know I've shared a lot of information and I talk quickly, so I love to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maggie. Just as a quick introduction for our next presentation tonight, Dr. Addison and Amy Hillman are going to share some information with us tonight. But as you know, one of our pillars of our strategic plan is around human capital. And one of the things that we are really charged with in that is recruiting and retaining the very best staff for our students in Olathe and also growing our own. And also trying to work to have a staff that is more representative of our student population. So, Amy and Ann have been working like crazy to do all kinds of... Amy is never short of energy, if you don't know. It's what we love about her. It's awesome. But I'm excited tonight that they're going to share with you some updates on where we are with the work that's happening within our system. You know, I heard somebody say a minute ago, working kind of behind the scenes to support education and that kind of thing. And this is the kind of work that happens within our system every single day that often isn't noticed or seen, because it's two to three people working hard with lots of other people to move something really important forward. So, I'm really pleased to have them share information with us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much for letting us be here this evening. I've been here before and visited with you about new educators, new educator induction, our comprehensive program. We're still super proud of that. And we're still working really hard with that. But right before the pandemic, Dr. Jaeger called me in and said, "There's this other piece we'd really like you to begin thinking about." And that is creating a bigger pool of teachers to come in. And at that time, I started working with student teachers. And so, of course, we immediately go to the strategic plan and the initiative that Dr. Jaeger just referenced of enhancing and refining our recruitment plan to increase our applicant pool. And so, with that charge of growing a stronger workforce, I worked closely with those human resources. I worked very closely with our DEI department to be purposeful in that recruitment. We identified and began recruiting student teachers from universities with some greater diversity than we had been getting in the past. But there was a bit of challenge with that. And it was kind of interesting to see that there was a perception out there about Olathe, that we really, you know, we were this Johnson County School District. It was, it wasn't urban. It was very suburban. It was very white. And so, that was kind of an interesting thing. And getting folks to say, "Yeah, I'd love to come there," was a little bit challenging. So, we began inviting some universities to come see Olathe and go out and tour and see our students and see our teachers and what was happening. And they were very excited to see that. But as we're doing that and in these classrooms, we realized that really sitting right in front of us were our future teachers. These beautiful children, these amazing support staff folks who were looking for opportunities to grow in their career. And so, that was really an exciting aha that I think we had. And we haven't given up on continuing to talk with universities. We're going in regularly and visiting with students early on in their education to encourage them to think about coming to Olathe when it's time to student teach. But we are also beginning to go in and talk to our kids and talk to our support staff about the idea of potentially becoming educators in Olathe. And that was like a great thought, but easier said than done. And so, I was super excited when last summer, Dr. Jaeger called and said, "You know, I've got somebody that I think would be great to work with you guys on this as we begin to grow our own." So, we had all these dreams. And then he introduced the idea of Amy Hillman. And so, just very quickly, I am going to introduce Amy, because she's the exciting part. But I don't know if you all noticed. You probably do, because I think she was up hobnobbing just a little bit upstairs. But Amy was the 2020 Region 3 Kansas Teacher of the Year. And you will see why as soon as she starts talking. So, I want to back up and let her talk about the exciting work we've been doing for the last like couple weeks. It's like we've accomplished so much. It's incredible. Thank you so much, Dr. Addison. Oh, my gosh. I was like, are they going to mic me? She's like, no, you have to stay in one location, Amy. So, I'm going to do my very best, y'all. I'm Amy Hillman, and it is my absolute pleasure to serve USD 233. This is why I am here. From the moment we... I loved your storytelling a moment ago, because at the moment that my husband and I landed here, oh, we had choices, but Olathe was our only choice. And I had to, I just had to work for 233. So, as I jump into this, realize that my recruiting liaison title, it has a few different facets of information. I'm going to do my very best to keep your attention, because that's just what I do, y'all. And with that in mind, I want to go ahead and introduce this vision. Take a look at the vision, but I want three words to stand out. Inspire, ding. To connect, boom. And to elevate. I'm going to read this to you. "To be innovative and proactive in creating and expanding future educator opportunities by designing resources and collaborations that inspire, ding, connect, boom, and elevate our Olathe students and staff members into our educator pipeline right here in Olathe." Now, before I click that button, I want to explain to you how I designed the information tonight. I'm going to give you three present movements, three present initiatives that we're currently working on. And we have launched all three. The fourth piece is where we want to go in the future. So, in the present, in our present state, we have designed something called the Faye Crew, the Future Educator Crew. Now, my job in this is to teach, present, recruit, and connect with our eighth grade groups. We call the Faye Crew. And then the high schools, the already established clubs, our avid teams, and other teacher-inspired students. Oh, yeah, that's the next part, you see. Because we need to promote the career opportunities in education in our own kids here in Olathe. Now, I also want to create a bit of a culture shift, one that invites our teachers and administrators and staff members to find those beautiful educators in training. The ones that are sitting in the classroom, we know who they are. And sometimes they just need to be recognized and noticed for their teaching ability already. Now, my third thing, to design opportunities that support efforts to intentionally support underrepresented demographic groups of students and classified members into our educational career. Now, the little words at the bottom you'll see in boldface, those are five different lessons that I do promise to launch into our Faye Crew students to get them pumped about what education is all about. Now, I have to be honest with you. I got great news today. And I'm sure you want to know. As of yesterday, we had 49 Faye Crew members. Now, these are eighth grade students that are saying to us in eighth grade, "I want to be an educator, so I need to know more." "Oh, no, no, no. See, that's good, but I have even better information." You see, y'all, we had this cool eighth grade expo, this career expo where the kids get to go into the IRC and they're moving around and they're checking it out. I had over 500 students stop by my booth. And then, not only 500, by the way, a third were boys. Ooh, yes. Bring on the gentlemen into our career. But wait, the greatest part was more than 200 of them wrote their name down to be invited into the Faye Crew. You see, in eighth grade, they're deliberately making a choice that they want to know more. And that's all I could ever ask. So, 42 new members just showed up in a matter of one day. Can you only imagine how great our classrooms will grow to be? Now, two weeks ago, ooh, we had an event, y'all. We had an event over at the IRC. Only two weeks ago, we launched our first university partnerships passport event. Now, who was it for? Well, think of the word pass. P, Paris. A, our aides. S, S, Support Staff. Our passport employees right here, right now in Olathe. They're in our classrooms already. They're already loving education. But see, they need just a little connecting to make sure their university passion, their ideas that they want to get to the university level and certify. Well, that's where we come into play. You see, this evening that we launched, we had a November impact. I love the word impact. The impact of the evening is as follows. 87 RSVP'd for an evening. 87 signed up for this event. We had seven colleges and universities. And then 67 attended that event. Those 20 that couldn't come, that's okay. That's my job. I made sure they're plugged in, you see. We sent them all the information. 87 now are in this cohort that I will continue to feed information. The beautiful part was, we had some Paris aides and support staff that have never been to a college class before. I got you. We have some that have an associate's degree. Awesome. We have, we have Paris and aides. They have four-year degrees. We have one with a master's. They're in our system already. They just need light shone on that path. Ooh, we, click. Saturday Scholars, y'all, this is my third. I promised my third initiative. This was launched originally at Washington Elementary and now at SFT 13 years ago. We have, as Saturday Scholars, this motivate mentor and move them forward process and program. It's ready to launch January through March. You know, the Faye Crew kids that I was talking about, the ones that we want them to not only talk the talk, but walk the walk? Saturday Scholars, we're going to sign them up to be mentors for this program. We serve sixth and seventh grade students. I like to call them scholars, because if they're showing up on a Saturday morning instead of cereal and cartoons, they're scholars in my book. We study STEAM, SEL, engagement, language arts, cultural experiences, community, careers, character, leadership, and relationships. We're connecting our mentors, our teacher leaders, to sixth and seventh graders and making connections. You see, it's a win-win for all of us. Everybody gets a little something. I'll tell you, JJ, he'll tell you, his test scores will speak the truth. The kids that are part of Saturday Scholars, and we're talking 60 sixth and seventh graders and 47 BC, before COVID. Before COVID, when we had this, we had 47 volunteer mentors volunteering 60 hours a year. Hey, hey, those are teacher leaders in my book, making a difference. I'm letting them practice the world of education with some of the greatest educators. Now, for the future. I told you about quarter one and quarter two. I hit that really strong. Quarter three, Faye Crew at the high schools. I'm coming for you, high schools. I'm coming for Avid too. I'm an avid instructor. And I know in our avid courses and classes, some of the most beautiful educators are in the making. I'm coming for you. And then it comes to Saturday Scholars will be in third quarter. Now, realize that quarter one and quarter two trickles into quarter three. Those things that we have started, they will continue with all the contacts. Quarter four, Faye Crew, high school volunteering, Faye Crew Summit. Oh, I'm going to end on that note, because that's a good one. Summer Academy ESU Passport Spring Event. What we just did two weeks ago, we're going to bring it back in the spring. And we're already designing that experience as we speak. We listen to the feedback. Finally, Faye Crew Opportunities. Let me tell you. Ooh, I'm excited about this, y'all. Faye Crew Summit Spring 2022. We're taking our Faye Crew students and we're creating a full day to talk the talk and walk the walk. You see, a half day, we're going to coach them up at the spot. We're going to use The Spot, by the way. Amazing Tuesday Nights, The Spot. We're going to coach them up in the morning. And then in the afternoon, we're going to have those very members go visit an elementary school classroom that is part of their middle school feeder pattern. I have to be honest with you. I cannot be more proud to be Olathe USD 233. Every moment that I come into our buildings, it's with purpose and impact. And I have you to thank. Sometimes it's thankless, what you do. We've watched for a year and a half you doing phenomenal work and many years before. I want to thank you from a teacher. From a teacher's heart, thank you for your hard work. I appreciate your time. And by the way, come on by, Saturday Scholars. Come see what we got cooking, okay? All right. Thank you for your time. Ann. The parents are drawn to her like blank paper. You can't tell. It's amazing. It has really made, like honestly, two years of dreaming become reality. So, I'm super grateful to Amy. Do you all have any questions?
Before that, sorry to interrupt, Ann. But before that, first, I feel like I should apologize for keeping Amy from you all. And then the second thing, I just wonder, Amy, if you would quickly, just because we have so many people watching our board members, our board meetings these days, would you mind just describing really quickly what Avid is?
You bet. And goodness, we have avid instructors right here in our audience. Avid is a program where we take students that are highly diverse, oftentimes first-gen students that have aspirations of college, but they're first-gen. So, as I like to say, they don't have the secrets yet. So, what we've done with incredible avid instructors is they are placed into a program for four years at the high school level. So, as they enter as a freshman, they typically keep that same coach all four years. Now, that coach is going to teach them strategies and structures that will get them through all the way to college, you see. We also want them part of the AP programming. Now, as we know, underserved populations oftentimes aren't drawn in to some of those AP courses as they should, my son included. But you have to break down the barriers. And Avid, our avid programs breaks down barriers every day with each student. Now, the greatest part is that our avid teachers, they all need a round of applause, because they take on this family of students and create change that has ripple effects up. And our students in the avid programs typically walk out with scholarships, oftentimes that take care of most of their bills. And then we send them off to college. And if I have my way, I'm going to bring them back as educators. I'm looking at my avid folk right here. So, any other questions about Avid? It actually came from West Coast, but I was trained down in the South. So, listen, it is a powerful program. It makes change.
Any questions, board members?
I'm curious if we know anything about the kind of diversity
I'm curious if we know anything about the kind of diversity that you're seeing in the kids that are signing up.
Oh, yes. This is beautiful. Now, do you recall that the first number I gave you was a forty-eight? Yep, and so the beautiful part about that first number is that it came from SFT and IT. Why? Because they have AIM programs. AIM is similar to Avid, but it has its own differences, and it's based in an eighth-grade curriculum. But the beautiful part is, we've drawn in children that, number one, are starting to believe in education, and, number two, for them to actually see themselves as the instructor. So with those two, that big number came from those two buildings. And the diversity level is sixty-seven percent in one, and the other is forty-five percent. It's beautiful. That's the diversity we are looking for. The other students, well, the numbers are still rolling in. I'll get back to you on that, but they're the students that actually have the light already for education.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. All right, we're moving along to public comments, four point zero one, Mr. Gary.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Our first speaker is Megan Bricks.
Good evening, Board of Education. I was very excited to hear Amy talk because I just felt like the same amount of excitement in her that I have when I speak here, so it's great to see. My name is Megan Bricks, and I'm a proud elementary music teacher and assistant high school bowling coach in the district. I was extremely excited to see my athletic director here as my bowling season starts next week. During the last Board of Education meeting in November, I was not able to be here because I got to have my first in-person musical performance of the year, and it truly brought physical tears to my eyes, seeing my students work so hard and get to perform for both the school during the day and their family and friends at night. I'm so thankful to be able to sing with my students and provide these performance opportunities. Next week, we begin bowling tryouts, and I couldn't be more excited to begin my high school bowling season this year. Thank you for making decisions to help keep our students and staff safe and in school. I hope that you continue to monitor the data closely to keep everyone safe. Tonight, I have two pieces that I really want to talk about. First, I want to take the time to thank our three outgoing board members for their time, effort, and dedication to this district and the community. Brian, Gary, Brent McKeon, and Kristen Schultz, I want to personally thank you for your time serving on the Olathe Public Schools Board of Education through my entire time teaching as a, just a music teacher, my four years so far. I know that you have spent countless nights reading emails, some of which came from me, answering phone calls, and dedicating yourselves to help further and better the Olathe Public Schools. I'm so thankful that you were so willing to serve during a pandemic and that you were here to support both the students and staff, and for that, I'm so appreciative. I wish the three of you all the best, and thank you for your time served here. Tonight, I am also here to remind everyone that we are in this together. As a community, we gather to support the students in the Olathe Public Schools, as well as the teachers and staff that work tirelessly to provide the best for our students. Right now, I hope that everyone takes a moment before winter break to find a coworker, or a teacher, or a student, and tell them that you appreciate them. During trying times, it's pretty tough right now. It is easy to focus on just the survival and the day-to-day stress and the planning and getting through the day, and sometimes we forget that the smallest compliment or the small note of gratitude can change someone's day for the better. We have a lot going on, but we are the Olathe Public Schools, and we must always strive to support each other no matter what. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Weed.
Good evening. President Beveridge, members of the school board. I am John Weed, a thirty-five-year resident of the district, a retired gynecologist surgeon, and a parent whose daughter matriculated through this system from Walnut Grove Elementary to Pioneer Trail Middle School and Olathe East High School. I'm here tonight in reference to a book being placed in school libraries, All Boys Aren't Blue by George Matheson Johnson, subtitled, A Memoir and a Manifesto. The work was criticized as child pornography due to several graphic descriptions of the author's sexual accounts. Despite objectional sexual content, the book did not meet the legal definition of pornography that required that the content be, quote, "visual and enticing." This book is a memoir of the personal experience of a black queer, his self-designation, leading to the radical activism of a paranoid narcissist with post-traumatic stress disorder. The objection to this book is not about book burning, but questioning the propriety of such a book, tacitly endorsed by the board, in the environment where the adolescent audience is already struggling with major body changes, raging hormones, peer pressure, misleading or false information about human biology and sexual development, including gender identity. A proper venue for this book is the public library, where at least there's the potential for parental awareness, involvement, and discretion. The book should succeed or fail on its own in the open forum of public debate. With these comments, I submit to the board a book review and a copy of the book, for the record, a book review in more detail than two minutes can permit, and a copy of the book so that my comments can be evaluated from the source. I encourage all of you to actually read the content and then ask yourself, would I approve of such material in my school library? Thank you.
Hello. Microphone on. So, I prepared some comments, but I just want to first make sure that I reach out. I did attend the Celebration of Life at Sarko Park in Lenexa earlier for the young man Gavin Green who took his life earlier this week. Having been in a senior class that lost eight kids in six months of my own, the scars are always with us, and I want to remind all of us to see the faces of the children and the teachers that we work with, see them, listen to them, and reach out to them. Lives need to be saved. So tonight, I had three themes I wanted to really cover, and one was gratitude, opportunity, and then hope. For all the chaos, uncertainty, and challenges of the last year, we have all something to be thankful for, no matter where we are. Even within the battles, kids, parents, families, teachers, staff, administrators, schools, and the community that we face, we're all still here. We are. Being grateful, thankful, and remembering we are blessed more than we deserve helps keep life in perspective. Then there's opportunity. With change and struggle also comes opportunities for all of us to grow and learn, choose new and better paths for ourselves, the school district, the teachers, the students. Each week, each day, each month, we have new opportunities to change the past. We can't change it, we can change our future. We don't have preordained outcomes in life. You all have experienced that every day, something seemed to change the last two years. But I'm going to remind us to listen to the community. We in the board's service are supposed to be in the service of the district and the families. Let's acknowledge our mistakes and choose hope for the future. And with that, hope is a huge word that allows us to desire and consider possibilities, to expect better, to have confidence and trust, while we wish for events to go our way in the near and far future. We have hope that our elementary and middle schools too, our teachers, staff, and teacher kids, will be mask optional as soon as possible, just like we've allowed our high schools. And with that, scars will heal, but lessons won't. We have to hope that kids will return to the very center of everything that we do in this district. We have to hope to build leadership, relationships with each other, with our community, and our kids. Mental health is critical to our physical health, and please stay focused on that. Thank you.
Joan Gilson.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Joan Gilson, and I've been a resident of Olathe for the last eighteen years. Several local and national organizations have made diversity, equity, and inclusion a priority. The League of Women Voters of Johnson County, of which I am a member, is one such organization. It has a policy for diversity, equity, and inclusion to which it is fully committed in principle and in practice, and our policy is central to our organization's current and future success in engaging all individuals, households, communities, and policymakers in creating a more perfect democracy. Our statement reads, "There shall be no barriers to full participation in our organization on the basis of gender, gender identity, ethnicity, race, native or indigenous origin, age, generation, sexual orientation, culture, religion, belief system, marital status, parental status, socioeconomic status, language, accent, ability status, mental health, educational level or background, geography, nationality, work style, work experience, job role function, thinking style, personality type, physical appearance, political perspective, or affiliation, and/or any other characteristic can be identified as recognizing or illustrating diversity." The benefits of a strong DEI program for our community are clear. These programs allow students to reach their full potential as contributing members of our democracy. Through more effective instruction, and the benefits are well documented, DEI programs prepare students for the global economy, build confidence later in life, promote empathy, and reduce prejudice, improve student achievement, and most importantly, foster the creativity that makes for strong, smart citizens. This is because students are exposed to diverse experiences and people who will make a positive impact on their own development and a profound impact on our society. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and thank you for the work on the school board. We appreciate it more than you know.
Thank you. Next speaker is Katie Dixon.
Hey there. Good evening. I'm Katie Dixon, and I appreciate the board and the new board members giving me time to speak tonight. When I think about the opportunity ahead of us, and I think about how we can capitalize on it, I think about defining our why. And for me, it's about fostering a vibrant, healthy, and economically competitive community. Undeniably, America's businesses are championing initiatives to create a culture of belonging in the workplace, and inclusive workplaces are the future of American capitalism. I'd like to share a quote from Larry Fink, who is the founder and CEO of BlackRock, which is the largest money manager in the world, and he had a letter to CEOs in his annual letter, he said, "A company that does not seek to benefit from the full spectrum of human talent is weaker for it, less likely to hire the best talent, less likely to reflect the needs of its customers and the communities in which it operates, and less likely to outperform." As you heard tonight earlier, diversity can be our strength, and our public school system can capitalize on the strength. We need to hire the best talent. We need to reflect and respond to the needs of our community, and Olathe needs to produce the best product we can, educated, well-adjusted students, ready for the future of Kansas. So we can use the same corporate framework in Olathe Schools as a guidebook to take advantage of the changing landscape around us. This is not a time to be fearful. This is a call to action. I hope you, our board members, join me and Larry Fink and other CEOs in seeing this as an opportunity instead of an obstacle to overcome. Leadership is an activity. This board's leadership manifests itself by understanding its why. And if you agree with me that our guiding star is to create a vibrant, healthy, economically competitive school system that outperforms its peers, then you will join other leaders in creating, disclosing, and fully embracing Olathe Public Schools' long-term plan to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jay Moyer.
Good evening. My name is Jay Moyer, and I'm here on behalf of Equality Kansas, of Metro Kansas City, in my role as the vice chair. I am here to hopefully provide my own experiences and my perspective on the way that school districts run and kind of what it's like to grow up as an LGBTQ student in Johnson County. Unfortunately, I didn't go to school here in Olathe. I was tier neighbors to the north in Shawnee Mission. But this area, being what it is, I feel as though I would have had a very similar and a very high-quality education if I were here in Olathe as well. I wanted to share a story tonight. When I was a student at Shawnee Mission North High School, I had to go through the criticisms of my peers. I got judged for the way I looked every day, the way I dressed, the way I talked, the way I stood. Specifically, I can think of one of my peers who was bullying me every single day and calling me names and saying all these terrible things, and you'd think, wouldn't I have the opportunity and the outlet to talk about that and to have an open communication with the school to try and fix the solution? Well, unfortunately, one of the things that was aiding and abetting, making sure that I didn't feel safe and welcome in school, is the fact that that open line of communication was not there. When I tried to go to an associate principal about the problem, they told me to just ignore it, to just shrug it off and let it keep happening. And I could not talk to my teachers because they did not feel like they were in a position to communicate with me. Now, I'm saying this specifically because there is a rumor going around that the Olathe School District might adopt a policy that students cannot talk to their teachers and vice versa about preferred pronouns and preferred names. And I want to make sure that that is a very harmful thing that can lead to outing students to their parents and peers. Outing is a very, very terrible thing. In some shocking statistics, when transgender students are outed, a study by the Centers for Disease Control in 2017 showed that thirty-five percent of transgender youth had attempted suicide, and over half of them had had prolonged feelings of depression, anxiety, and hopelessness. I want to make sure that every single thing that we're doing in our school districts here in Johnson County means an open line of communication so that students and teachers feel safe to talk to each other about these issues, that students feel like they can be their best selves in the classroom. And I think the beginning of that is to allow students and teachers to have an open line of communication. So my ask tonight is that the board does the right thing. Our organization and myself are here as resources, so if you have any questions about anything I've talked about, please reach out to me. Come find me. I'd love to have a chat. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Casey Johnson.
I just want to state that I wrote this two days ago, and I had no idea I would follow the rock stars that are talking about exactly what I'm talking about. Okay, here we go. I'll be professional now. Good evening. I am here as an Olathe graduate, a former Olathe teacher, a former Olathe parent, a current professor from Ottawa University, and a representative for all EPPs currently in partnership with Olathe. I want to say thank you to Dr. Jaeger, Dr. Addison, and Mrs. Hillman, that's what I wrote two days ago, for providing an equitable space for both private and public universities who support Olathe teachers and staff. Ottawa University might be small, but we are mighty, and I have brought the Olathe way to our updated programs and practices. Olathe is home for me, and I consider you- Olathe is home for me, and I consider you family, so we need to have a quick family meeting and talk about a roadblock that's currently keeping gifted, talented individuals from joining your teaching staff. I'm referring to adults making a career change. They have families. They have a job. And yet, their heart wants to be in the classroom. They're enrolled in our unified program, earning their master's degree in education, earning a teaching license, all while working as a cohort to become leaders in the field. The roadblock? Student teaching. As an EPP, we prepare students for this requirement when they enroll, but I would like to ask Olathe to meet us halfway. Allow universities like Ottawa to provide you with candidates who are disciplined, driven, and devoted. The final report from the Blue Ribbon Task Force on Teacher Vacancies and Supply suggested districts provide stipends, incentives, and support. I'm asking for these in regard to adult, graduate-level student teachers. I believe this will benefit everyone. I know this is quite the undertaking, so I'd like to volunteer as a consultant to anyone willing to create a sustainable and supported option for those who are not earning their teaching license through traditional programs. I've read the reports from KSDE regarding the impending teacher shortage, and I have combed through the regulations. Thankfully, there are no restrictions to providing this type of support during student teaching. This district helped make me who I am, and I now have the privilege to train up the next generation of teachers. I see the shortage of subs. I see the stress on the faces of my peers who are still in the classroom. I hear the stories from the paras. Maybe we can work together to solve these issues while offering much-needed support for adults working hard to be in the classroom while also being adults. Thank you.
Next speaker is Angela Skavuzo.
Good evening. I just wanted to thank the board for your service and for the opportunity to speak this evening. Recently, my child's class was exposed to coronavirus at school. Subsequently, the unvaccinated were singled out, and it severely impacted their mental health. My husband and I greatly appreciated the conversation with our family and their response, but I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the welfare of the students, of the district's students and families, because I know our district can do better. Coronavirus vaccines, masks, and masks are very polarizing and divisive topics in society and our schools. We know without a doubt the pandemic has severely impacted the mental health of children far greater than the actual virus. For an exposed and vaccinated child to remain in school, they must test daily, wear a mask, eat lunch in a segregated area, while the vaccinated, who can get infected and transmit the virus, remain free of constraints when exposed in the same manner. If this was truly about health and mitigating transmission, why aren't we looking at this as a symptomatic versus asymptomatic issue? How is testing healthy asymptomatic students effective? If a student does test negatively daily, why are they being masked and segregated? By masking and segregating vaccinated students who are naming them, they are known and marked by their teacher, staff, and peers. How will they now be judged? How will the district and staff promote unity and reduce stigma regardless of vaccination status? After experiencing this firsthand, I am deeply concerned about students' mental health. The board's own core values are listed as integrity, vision, accountability, resilience, innovation, and inclusivity. The values mean nothing when your actions don't reflect the health equity between the vaccinated and unvaccinated students. We need policy that exceeds CDC guidelines to put academic success, mental health, and equity of all students at the forefront. Schools must not be a place of further division. Coronavirus seems to be turning from a pandemic to an endemic. There are new variants and changing rules around every corner. Breakthrough infections seem to be the new normal. Families and schools must be the stores of stability. Parents need to be the point of contact for medical records. Students have never been and should not be asked for that. Now is the time to make masking optional for all students. It's the time to treat all students in equity regardless of vaccination status. We must stand for the mental and emotional health for all students and all families to live without the fear from stigma and judgment based on their personal medical decisions. Thank you.
Kim Kraus.
Hi, my name is Kim Kraus, and I'm the mother of four children who have been in the school district, and I'm a health counselor. I wanted to thank you for a lot of processes that have gone really well throughout our years at Olathe. I also want to speak tonight about the process that I hope has changed, and especially with the new members coming in. In the spring of 2020, my husband and I realized that decisions were being made regarding our children that were out of our control. We, as parents, didn't have a voice for our children in Olathe, a public school. We and another family member, a parent, had to go through and adjust in June 2020 to support the district with their children's names, a district of importance. Quickly, 3,000 families joined, and I believe it grew to 7,000 families, which helped a lot of these schools have individual rights and not their government. In July 2020, we met with Mr. Allison, who was in heaven. We came to support the district, trying to ask to hold the balance, support our amazing teachers, and support our district. My husband spent countless hours sorting through comments on the website to make sure that we were respectful to you all, and to our district, to our teachers, to our family. We told Mr. Allison that we represented 3,000 voices of our parents. We wanted to work as a team, not choose sides. We have precious childhood memories to do to teachers in the district, and just in our old family, in our own family. My oldest son was moving to New York City to be a teacher. My second son was sent home to the Big Ten, as their football stadium was close to them. And we could see the mental health implications of students acting in Kansas City. My third son was caught in limbo, not knowing what senior year was going to be like. He had worked since second grade for the moment to be on a football field at State. My daughter had an autoimmune disease, which is one of the reasons to take more precautions from COVID. Just in our immediate family, each child needed something different. I felt different fear for each of them. We weren't here to judge, but find solutions together, finding solutions to walk through COVID together and to prevent a mental health crisis for our children. In July of 2020, after talking to Mr. Allison, the school board met. I can still feel shocked when I heard the vote take place, and the school board member chuckled and stated, "How do we know if this group is for real?" I would hope that if there's a group of 3,000-plus parents, an elected school board would pause to understand the vote of the parents whom you were elected by. After dismissing parents' voices, anger erupted, and sides were quickly taken in multiple directions. Running out of time. So I just want to say, we have to work together. I am a mental health counselor. Capacity is full. Cotwood opened a new intensive outpatient treatment for 12 years and older. We have to work together. This is a pandemic, and the only way to do that is together.
All right, that concludes our comments. On to action consent. Does anyone have any questions about 5.01 to 5.11? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve action consent on agenda items 5.01 through 5.11 as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gary, second by Mr. McCune.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
All right, and on to action bids, contracts, agreements. I know Mr. Geary had one question, so I'll let you ask that, and then any others that have questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know we've been talking about this for a long time. 6.02, the ERP and Human Capital Management Systems, I know it's been something that we've, for years, been talking about. It's a big dollar number, so I just kind of wanted to see if Mr. Hutchinson or somebody would kind of fill us in on what that entails for us. Thank you.
Sure thing. Good evening. So the ERP HCM is the Enterprise Resource Program and Human Capital Management System that we have proposed for purchase that really would be replacing kind of all of the backend business and human resource side of the district. Currently, we have a number of different systems that we use, and I use the word "systems" fairly loosely. For example, we have a system that we use for posting positions and then interviewing candidates and making a selection and hiring a candidate. That has not been the same system that we have to have all of that information put into once they are hired. So there's a ton of manual entry that goes into that. And then, once they are in our current payroll and business system, there is then alternate systems that have to be tracked for evaluations and professional development, and every other aspect of employment, benefits, payroll, all of those things. So this specific system really encompasses all of that into one cloud-based system that would allow us to have much more functionality and for all of that information to track through one system rather than having multiple systems that oftentimes do not talk to one another, which then means we have to have staff members who go in and manually correct information as we have changes for staff members, whether it's due to contracts and that kind of thing. I know that's a long-winded explanation, but I'm happy to answer any further questions, too.
No, that's good for me. I know it was a big dollar number, and I just kind of wanted to make sure we were, again, understanding why.
This has really been a joint project between the business and HR department as well as technology, because it has a huge impact on all three of those areas. And we know that each of our departments will see a significant difference in coming onto the system like that. I know John could speak to kind of the backend payroll or the business side of it as well.
One of the significant changes for us is really in our budget forecastings, the scenarios, and something called position control, which we do not have in this district, which with 80% of our costs really being in labor, we have to be very able to track every transition that teachers make. It's always a domino effect. This teacher goes to this school, this teacher actually left, this teacher retired, and you have to know at any moment exactly where you are when you're dealing with a half-billion-dollar budget. I also want to point out that the most significant portion of this cost is really in that first year implementation. It's not the ongoing cost. And this particular provider has just, has done a lot of work with K-12 systems and has a lot of essentially pre-built processes and has pretty much seen everything, from having to escrow for benefits or what we call the spread, where we pay people over 12 months, even though they're only working 10. That can take just hours and hours and hours of after-programming work for our staff, and you really don't get truly implemented for five years. They have all of that built, and you buy those modules, they see how we work, make recommendations on how to improve that efficiency as they implement the software. So that's why the first year is a significantly higher cost than the ongoing reports.
I would say also, just as a side piece, you know, one of the things that we're challenged with a little bit outside of business and finance and human resources is if we have a staff member who calls us and says, "I would like some information about my work history related to, you know, pay and raises, things like that, different positions and dates and things like that." We have servers in the district to very old systems that we have up and standing just so we can answer those questions. We still have a server that's dedicated to a system called the AS400, I believe. And how long ago did we quit using that as a system?
13 years ago.
So we quit using that 13 years ago as a system. So a system where on our payroll, we have about 6,000 individuals alone, having to step off the phone and say, "I'm going to need 24 hours to research your situation," really is not best practice. And I think that that shows that not only are we not having things like position control and things that we need to be very cognizant of, but also just service to our employees and those that interact with us in a human resources and also a financial way. So this really takes us to the spot we should be with, considering that our staff in Olathe in terms of people on our payroll is 6,000 people. Thank you.
Any other, go ahead, Ms. Felter.
The student data warehouse, is that you, John? That would, can you talk a little bit about it? We're not buying a physical warehouse, right?
And actually, John, I asked Rich Wilson if something came up about that, to be able to talk about that. So, Rich, do you mind? Thank you.
I don't mind. First answer is no.
Thank you. The name is kind of tricky.
It is not a physical building, no. So it's actually a way to house disparate data. So we have data that's housed inside of Synergy, which is, you know, demographic grades. We also get information from map testing, the Kansas Assessment. All of this different data is in different spots. It actually sounds like a very similar problem. So the idea is that we can house this all in one collective space, and then myself in my office and administrators have the opportunity then to pull that data together in different ways to look at student needs. And, you know, as we continue to have a really diverse set of students that we want to meet their needs where they are, really having all of that data kind of pulled together makes a lot more sense than having to pull it individually and then trying to piece it together. So that's where that's coming from. Not a house.
Sorry, no. Part of the benefit to that is, you know, we have principals, administrators, staff across the district because of the systems that we're using to gather information about students, where we're spending a considerable amount of time going in one system, out of a system, in one system, out of one system, where if we can have that in one place, then we can spend our time actually analyzing the data, looking more closely on how to meet the needs of our students. So that's really the intent. I would also say that out of our SR funds, our SR2 funds is really what prompted us to think about this, because, you know, as students came back from the pandemic and what we worked through there, we knew that we needed to be on top of where students are with data, and our staff works really hard to do that. But anything we can do to help that be an easier process so we can spend our time meeting the needs of students, the better off we'll be.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Rich. Any other questions on 6.01 through 6.05? If not, I'd entertain a motion for, maybe we can lump all five together. I'd make a motion to approve 6.01 through 6.06 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCune, second by Ms. Schultz.
Is it 6.05, right?
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
I think Mr. McCune was trying to mess it up, so we have to have another meeting.
Well, actually, it's interesting. My printed paper says 6.05, but there's 6.06 on that, so that was my bad.
The live agenda.
Okay.
It says 6.06.
You're like, what are you talking about?
Okay. So we need to include 6.06 then, too?
He did, didn't he?
Oh, you did? Okay, then we're good.
I was trying to correct him based on old data. Sorry about that.
All right. On to action other. I think we have a quick presentation on 7.01.
Good evening. This is very quick. I don't think I would call it a presentation. Just an update for you on the district's audit for the fiscal year that ended on June 30. As you know, the district engaged Allen Gibbs-Hulick to perform that audit of our financial statements, and I am happy to inform you that they have issued a clean, unqualified opinion of our financial statements. One major component of that audit is the single audit, and that's where they really just focus on our federal fundings, our federal grants and awards. This year, they looked at the child nutrition cluster, which would be all of our food service, federal revenue. And then they also took a look at our COVID relief funds that we expended last year. And so for those, I'm happy to report also that they had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so everything was clean there as well. So for you to approve tonight, we have presented you with our audited financial statements for fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. Any questions?
Not a question, but just a comment, like a big thank you to you and your team. That's no easy task, and we continue just to perform exemplary, so.
Well, thank you.
Great job, Casey.
All right. Can I get a motion for 7.01?
I move to approve action item 7.01 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Wickliff.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
All right, and on to the land sale. Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a quick question. Sorry, Shannon. John, was this a no less than? I'm sorry, I see a disregard. Shannon, continue.
Move to approve. Item 7.02 is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wickliff, second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
I think, yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felton?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
All right, moving along. Future action items we have there for, and then written information. 2021 December Head Start Directors Report, Parent Teacher Conference Totals for the Fall of 2021 are all there to review. And if anyone has any comments on that, we'll move to topics for discussion for board members. Mr. Wickliff?
I just want to, not to take us backwards, but I just want to thank Mr. McKeon, Ms. Schultz, Mr. Geary for their service, for their friendship, for their service to this community. It's been an absolute honor working with you guys, and I know we won't be strangers.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say ditto. It's been our.
All right.
I have something, so.
Okay.
Your timing is impeccable, Mr. Boyd.
I've been practicing all night. I try to be mindful of the words I use while I sit on this dais, and I think it's important, at least for me, to acknowledge some of the comments we heard tonight from our public speakers, particularly the comments related to the district's guidance around pronouns and how our building administrators should handle that. I know this is very recent, as we received notification today of, of an email from the ACLU and district, and our staff hasn't had the time to respond or to thoroughly look through that. But I did want to give Mr. Pittman an opportunity to discuss or address case law that we used as the district developed its guidance that was issued today to our administrators.
Hi there, good evening, everyone. And thank you for the question, Mr. Boyd. I'll, I'll try to do what attorneys are not doing, that's be succinct. They like to meander on. The, the guidance that, that, that's been kind of pushed out to our, to our staff or administration that we've worked on, the framework from that from, from a legal standpoint is Title IX. That's a federal law that many of us are familiar with, maybe not in the context of gender identity, maybe related to sexual harassment, or really access, equal access to educational opportunities regardless of sex. So from a, a legal standpoint, within the last year or so, we've got some clarification from, from the federal government regarding how they would interpret Title IX as it applies to the access that our students have based upon their gender identity and gender orientation to the educational opportunities we have. So in practice, what does that look like? Well, all students and staff, but we'll just focus on students, under Title IX are, are permitted to have the same educational opportunities as any regardless of their sex. In, in 2020, there's United States Supreme Court case, it's Comstock versus Clayton County. It's a Title VII case, not a Title IX, but attorneys like myself who look at that, and most importantly, the offices for civil rights, which, which enforces Title IX, found that important because in that case, it was a gentleman, he was, he was an employee, he was gay, he was, he claimed he was fired because he was gay. And they said, "Well, you know, you can sue under Title VII because if you believe that you've been fired because you're homosexual," or they believe that you're homosexual. And so OCR Office for Civil Rights, again, enforces Title IX, pushed out guidance June of this year, and I think there's, there's a, they pushed a notice, fact sheets, a lot of literature saying, "We interpret Comstock to also apply to Title IX cases, or Title IX circumstances." So what does that mean for us? Well, it, it's good because it gives us clarity about how we should, you know, approach as a, as a district to make sure that all students, but certainly students based, who, who based on their sexual orientation, gender identity, gender orientation, have the same access to every, to every educational opportunities that we have in our district. As, so you're asking, how's this go to pronouns? The, this is where we have a, from an attorney's standpoint, we, we need more legal guidance. I wish it was there. There is another, there is another federal law, it's FERPA, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, that we all know well as educators. I'm not an educated attorney, but their law, I'm not here, that generally protects confidentiality of our students' information. That's the, you know. So how that applies here is that there's certain information that we can share about a student that, that, that we do, that is not protecting confidential information. Like when I was in high school and I was a lot slimmer, I was 6'1" and 190, and that's what was in, you know, number 77, you know, in your, in your program. Your, your name is directory information, those kinds of things. Importantly, gender in a pronoun is not directory information, just isn't. So then we have this issue of, if we have a student who has disclosed that they are, and shared with the counselor, the teacher, that we, you know, you know, with anyone, that they may, may be identifying by a gender different than what their birth was, that's disclosing their gender. And the question then is, before that is publicly shared in the school community, should the parents have the right to be aware of that? And parents have rights under FERPA there. So that is, that is one part of FERPA. We also have Title IX, which, which we undoubtedly follow and enforce and make sure our staff enforce, that we want to make sure that all students are, are supported. If they, if they confide in our counselors, they confide, you know, in, in any of our administrators or teachers, that, that they're, they're supported in, in that disclosure they made. And so then the process then is to make sure, from a legal standpoint, how we support that. So that's a very lengthy response. I hope I got there. But the, from, again, going back to the legal framework of this, there is, you know, undoubtedly the change in federal administration has, has provided some clarity with this. We have a different person in the White House, we have a different Department of Education leaders there, we have a different Department of Justice. Department of Education through OCR, Office for Civil Rights enforces Title IX, and the guidance that they provide is what, is what we look at. And that's, as the guidance that we provided and Dr. Jaeger and all the administrators have worked on, that's kind of the framework we build, so.
Mr. Boyd, do you, do you mind if I respond?
Sure.
Maybe you have questions for Mr. Pittman first. I'll.
We can ping pong. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. My response will sound a little less legal, if that's okay. You know, one of the things that we are challenged by and also blessed by is the size and scope of our system. You know, when we think about, and I mentioned this obviously a different topic tonight, but when you think about having staff members that are on our payroll in terms of a number of almost 6,000 people, and also having nearly 30,000 students in our school system, one of the things that we need to be able to do, even as we put federal law, state law, local law into practice in our district, is we need to provide a relative sense of predictability. So it doesn't matter if I'm in Lath Northwest, to Lath West, or Fairview Elementary, the response that I'm going to get is, is similar. And, you know, one of the things that, that we're challenged by a little bit, and perhaps a decision that was wrong on our part, is we started this conversation with our schools in hopes that it could be a conversation, so our staff could ask questions of their administrators and those kinds of things. Over the last 24, 48 hours, we've quickly realized we need to do more than just have a conversation, that we need to provide some clearer guidance. So we've worked on doing that over the last couple of days to, to offer some clarity. But one of the things that I think is, is critical is, we are not looking for a substantial change in our practice in Lath. We've been working through gender identity situations, students who are non-binary for years and years in our system. And a lot of that has to do with what Mr. Pittman described in terms of the federally protected piece of our students' identity. You know, I heard a comment tonight, I've had emails that reference the same thing, that we are intentionally putting staff members in a place where they may out students. That is not our intent. Our intent is to continue to protect the privacy of our students. So, you know, we will continue to have situations that we work through and those sorts of things. But one of the things I want to be really clear about is, our expectation is if a student has an adult that they confide in at school, and they want to have an individual conversation that says, "I think I'm gay and I'm not sure how to handle that." We're not saying that that staff member then needs to have, sign all the alarms and say, "Go to the counselor's office, go to the principal's office, and we got to call your parents." I mean, our staff works their sensitive issues with students all the time in this district. The, the change for us in many ways, and what we think we need to be careful about, is when a student is put in a situation when they're going to change their pronoun, they're going to change their name, and they say to a staff member, they say to multiple staff members, "Starting tomorrow, I would like my pronoun to be different, and we're going to talk to..." The expectation is that in the school, "I would like you all to do that." It puts our staff and us in a very awkward position if we say, "Student, we are going to support that, absolutely, but we're not going to tell your parents," where we have a large number of people that know that information anyway. I will say that we very intentionally, as we work through this, chose the word guidelines because we recognize we're working with kids, we're working with staff members, and we know that like any situation where a student is struggling or feels like they need to talk to someone, we want there to be an ability for them to sit down and have that conversation. And for us to also have a latitude that says, "Okay, this is a time where I feel like I need to involve the parents, or this is a time that I maybe need to go talk to the counselor and talk to the principal and problem solve how, how we navigate that moving forward." Certainly not the same thing, but, you know, that's one of the criteria for us when we make a call to Department of Family Protective Services, is where is the, the benefit for us or the need for us to contact and make that information? So I just want to be clear in saying that, that our intent is not to out our students that, that are in that situation. Our intent certainly is not to tell our staff if a student brings something like this up to you that you have to shut it off and march them down to the principal's office like they're in trouble. That's not our intent. You know, forever and ever, we've handled these situations with grace and compassion and, and, and related items, but, you know, our, our feeling is, the expectation is that we work with minors in this system. So as we have the ability and the confidence to partner with parents, which we believe is important, we feel like we need to do that. So not nearly as statutory sounding is what Mr. Pittman said, but I just wanted to offer that.
Well, I would just say that, you know, I think Mr. Pittman, one of the, the phrases he's used with it, we needed more guidance, more legal guidance around pronouns. And from your comments, Dr. Jaeger, and this is just my personal feeling, I feel like we are moving away from protecting kids and not having our teachers and administrator out kids or their parents. And I hope that we can, with more legal guidance and a better plan or better goal, come up with, with, with different guidance that wouldn't put kids or teachers in, in an awkward position as you used, while maintaining the, the privacy of, of those kids who decided to confide in a trusted adult in the building.
Yeah. And again, I want to be clear that, that our expectation is if a student confides, confides in a trusted adult, and that's, that's the conversation, we are not asking our staff at that point to violate that privacy. So just to be clear about that. And I think we'd be supported by FERPA and federal, yeah, in doing so, so.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
All right. Any other comments? So I had a quick question for you, Dr. Jaeger, and I'm not asking for your opinion, but I wanted to get some information from you about legal guidance that you've heard or been given from, I think, KESB or KDSE or KSTE about the mask mandate at the county level and how that would affect us. So again, not your opinion, but just legal guidance that we've gotten from those two organizations.
Chris probably sat down too quickly.
He didn't know it was.
He was going to be the presentation tonight. So thank you, Chris, for, for stepping up. I, I will just say, and Chris will probably share, you know, more, more information about this, but as the county made the mandate at the beginning, or the call, I don't know why the word's escaping me right now, but the county mandate to mask in our schools earlier this year, at that time, I was able to say, after consulting with Chris and others, that we didn't believe we had any option whether or not to comply with that. But since that time, obviously, there's been county health departments across the state who have entered in similar situations and things, so there has been a little bit more guidance. So, Chris, would you share a little bit of kind of what you know about that?
I have to, good evening again. No, yeah, the, well, the order we're talking about is the Johnson County Health Order 21-001. You know, generally, or not specifically, actually, it requires masking for anyone definitely up to sixth grade in a building with, with, with sixth graders, which for us goes up to eighth graders. Subject to certain exemptions, for religious exemptions and medical exemptions. The, I mean, the guidance that, that we've had more, more recently that you referenced, Mr. Beveridge, you know, it relates to the, the authority of county health offices to implement these types of mandates. And where this really puts us in a hard spot, I suppose, is that, you know, chapters, this is, I'm sorry, I'm reading my notes here, it's chapter 65 of the Kansas statutes. And so county authority, county health authorities have, have the authority to issue the orders that, that, that they did, the county health, health order. And the problem is if anyone does not comply with it, that's actually technically a crime. It could be a misdemeanor. And that's actually not just for someone violating the order, say, and if, I don't know, that walked in a building, you know, say, just a visitor, you know, it's, it's anyone who implements the order or should implement the order, potentially Dr. Jaeger or myself, or someone, I suppose, or the board. So that's the consequences from a legal standpoint of ignoring that, that order. You know, that's, you know, it's a class C misdemeanor. And not to get too dire down the, another step, which is another kind of a dire consequence, is the, the accreditation that all schools have in our state is, is tied into basically our compliance with state federal law. You know, that's, that's, you know, kind of, we, it kind of makes sense, but the problem is, is if we're violating a state statute, we're not compliant with state law. You know, and so that, again, could potentially put accreditation in trouble. I don't, I'm not going to sit here and give an opinion whether or not that would happen, but that's certainly when you read the statutes, that is the, that's, that's the logical step there. So the other part of this that, that I want to mention is that the, you know, the order that, that we have, that, you know, has a kind of the carrot and the stick, is how I describe. So the stick is, is that, again, we are required, you know, the district is to, you know, under the mandate to follow it, and if you don't, there's these criminal consequences and the like. The carrot is, is that there, there's civil immunity. That's KSA 60-504. It generally provides immunity for, for any employer that if they are following the public health guidelines, and they're in compliance with those, then you're, you're immune from, from suit for anyone who claims an employee, an employee or, or, you know, just a visitor or anyone that they transmit or contracted COVID within the, within the facility. That was a, I won't get off to the policy part of it, but that was passed, I believe, last year, it was, and it was, it was renewed in March, it expires next March. But the idea being, again, that the, we want people to go back to work, we want business to open up, you should be able to do that as long as you're required by the mandate, you know, we don't worry about a civil lawsuit. So that, that's generally kind of the legal aspect in terms of the masking mandates and the county's mandate.
And I may just mention quickly about accreditation. If for some reason, you know, we lost our accreditation because we didn't follow a health order, we would then be a non-accredited school district, which means that our staff, who is licensed, would be working in a not-accredited school district, which could, which could in turn affect their licensure, my licensure, and our ability to receive federal funds. So there's, there's, there's a lot more to all of that as you peel back the onion in terms of complying.
Okay. Thank you. All right, on to superintendent comments.
I feel like I've talked enough tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to share some things. You know, as you know, we've unmasked in our high schools starting this week, we've implemented a test-to-stay program, and, you know, I, Mr. Albers and I, earlier this week, had the opportunity to sit down with our superintendent's high school group, which is five kiddos from each high school, and I talked with them. How's it going? How's masks going, non-masking going, and those kinds of things? And, you know, certainly one of our concerns is honoring and respecting our students across the system. And I said, "Kids getting bullied about it, are there kids that aren't being, you know, supportive and, and those kinds of things?" But, you know, given that it's a pretty special group of high flyers that come to meet with, with myself and Clint, you know, they felt like it was going pretty well and that students were interacting and engaging with, with people in, in the right kind of way. There was a story shared where, you know, a student said, "There's a teacher that, that has some challenges where they feel like they need a mask on, and almost every student when they walk in that room, they're putting a mask on." And, you know, masks... massive aside, just that care and compassion for other people is really special to hear. So, I would say, just based on the very small sampling of 25 students, I'm proud with the way our students and our staff are working through that. You know, as you know, we have also begun the test to stay process in our district. And just to give a sense, you know, our testing clinic that we have is just not for people in test to stay, but it's also for people that work for us, students in our district who may be symptomatic or something like that, that they want to get a test. But prior to our test to stay, any given week, we had a low of 172, or the lowest we had was 172 tests in one week period, and a high of 439. Since we started test to stay, the lowest that we've had in a week was 707. As of this afternoon, we're at 700, or I'm sorry, yesterday afternoon, we're at 750 for just this week. So, we'll be well over 1,000 by the time the day ends tomorrow. So, you know, represented behind those numbers are nurses and staff members in every school and families who are driving kids to our testing site. And really pretty amazing when you think about the operation just happening to keep kids in school through a test to stay program. So, you know, not to go anywhere with that, other than just to say it's been a significant uptick. Sharon and Ange and Net and our team have worked really hard to make that successful. We've had some hiccups, but we, you know, are meeting frequently. We have another meeting tomorrow morning where we're trying to make sure we're geared up to support our system as we move forward with that. So, just wanted to share some numbers with that. In terms of numbers related to COVID in our school, in terms of quarantines or exclusions, that kind of thing, kids that would be test to stay, we'll have our first dashboard update on Friday. Our schools, our five high schools are all, and Mill Creek Campus and others are monitoring the numbers every day. So, if we need to make a change for the following day at a school, we're prepared to do that based on the criteria that you all adopted at the last board meeting. But the update will be Friday on our district website, our COVID dashboard by school, so our community can get a sense of what that's looking like. What's easier for us to extrapolate on a daily base is our attendance. That's the other metrics that we looked at in terms of the 7% number of daily attendance. We're tracking that every day at our high schools. So far this week, which obviously is the first week we've done it, the low number in terms of the lowest number in daily attendance in terms of students absent was 2.16% in one of our high schools. And the highest that we've seen yet this week is 4.88%. So, again, our high school staff are doing a nice job of watching that each and every day. And there's a team of us and principals and what have you that are getting a daily update on what that looks like. So, like everything with COVID, there's a new process and new procedures that we're working through. But I just want to thank everybody that's involved with doing that, because it's a lot when it's a system like ALATHA. So, just to mention that. I would also like to thank our county. They really recognize, the Department of Health and Environment is really recognizing the importance of keeping kids in school. You may or may not be aware, but the limit, or the number of PCR tests is not unlimited. And they're really working to focus the tests that are available to schools, to school districts, so we can focus on the test to stay programs being implemented in our county and keep kids in school. So, I did want to mention that as an appreciation tonight as well. One other thing that I just also wanted to mention, you know, last week, not being in school was timed well, I think, for many of our staff and also our families and what have you. I spent a lot of time on social media during that time. That sounds awful to say, but I did. But I was looking for the good news in the world, you know. And I was so struck by the power of our community and coming together, because there wasn't a day that went by prior to Thanksgiving where I didn't see pictures of people all across our community supporting our students and our families in the way of clothing, in the way of Thanksgiving meals, those kinds of things. And it was a really nice reminder to me about how special ALATHA is, and that's why, is we take care of each other and we take great pride in doing that. So, I just wanted to say a great big thanks to our community for those efforts, because that's really important to our young people and the success of our community. And then the last thing I want to mention is a very special thanks to Brent and Kristen and Brian. I've not worked with you for long as the superintendent, but I've had the opportunity to know each of you for a long time. And it has been a true, true pleasure to get to know you better, to have challenging conversations with each of you. You all ask good questions. You all hold us accountable. But at the end of the day, each day, you all deeply care about this community, and that impact will be felt for a very long time. So, I just want to thank you for your commitment to our district and our board as well.
All right. And your parting gift for them is two executive sessions?
It is.
Appreciate that.
So...
25 minutes for the first one, please.
Okay. The motion is on the...
I move to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters of not elected personnel, but the board will return to the regular meeting at 8:15 PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Geary. Think it by Mr. Wickliff.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
No, it's gonna be 13.01.
Thirteen is a what?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay, Mr. President, I move to go into executive session to discuss confidentiality student information pursuant to the exception under coma relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student and that the board return to the regular meeting at...
You said ten?
I think you said fifteen.
Fifteen?
At, uh...
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll grab the one.
No, it's gonna be thirteen point oh one.
Thirteen is a what?
Thirteen point oh.
Okay, Mr. President, I move to go into executive session to discuss confidentially student information pursuant to the exception under coma relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student and that the board return to the regular meeting act.
You said ten minutes?
I think you said fifteen.
Fifteen at, uh...
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.